Mayor, members of council, staff, privileged to be here tonight and to discuss your hard decisions. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for this opportunity to give you praise and thanks this evening for our council, our mayor, and those staff members up here, Father, for the ones that would be recognized tonight for their service and their participation in our town council and for their city. So we thank you, Father, for your wisdom and your knowledge and your vision to us, that we might continue to lead with consistency, integrity, and give you all the praise in Jesus' name.
Next, we have a couple of scouts, Jacob Kendel and Jake Platt. Here they come. They're going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Okay, Diane, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Grossman.
Here.
Councilmember Nye. Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Mayor Skug is absent this evening. Councilmember Mallory.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
And Councilmember Marshall.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Okay, the first scheduled announcement is by Supervisor Jack Smith. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Is this thing on? Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, very good. I want to thank you for allowing me to come here and do something that we don't get to do very often and hand you a check for the Prescott East San-- yeah, he's moving already. I have it right here, as a matter of fact. I have a check from the Board of Supervisors. We were going through our files and realized that the Prescott East Sanitary District had not been fully dissolved because we still had some things to finish up and whatnot. But it is my honor on behalf of the Board of Supervisors to present the town of Prescott Valley with a check for thirty-four thousand, three hundred and six dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Give me the money. Show me the money.
Yeah, thank you.
I know the mayor will be sorry he missed this. I'm going to be sorry that I have to turn it over, but I'll do that right now, so thank you very much, Supervisors.
Well, I did talk with the mayor, and the mayor says that you guys would be able to put this to good use. So, you know, town of Prescott Valley, you guys do an awesome job. I wish there was more, and I'm sure there will be in the future as we do things together, so thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, yeah. It's like being at home. See this check for about that long. Okay, we're going to change things just a moment, or just a little bit here. We're going to work with item C, which is Lieutenant Brandon Bonney's retirement now, and then we'll get to Chief Freitag after that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of council. We are here tonight to celebrate the retirement of Lieutenant Brandon Bonney for his nearly twenty years of service to the town of Prescott Valley. Brandon attended the Northern Arizona University where he graduated in nineteen ninety-six with a bachelor's degree in criminology and a minor in psychology. That's probably why he's been able to handle me for the year and a half I've been here. After graduating from Northern Arizona University, he attended the Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy and began working as a certified police officer with the Prescott Valley Police Department in that same year. Over the past twenty years, Brandon has enjoyed many opportunities to serve the public through different assignments and positions that he has held. He began his service just like everybody else does as an officer in patrol. He was selected to serve as the very first school resource officer. He was a founding member of the Bicycle Patrol Unit, and he served with distinction as a detective in the Criminal Investigation Section. As Brandon rose through the ranks, he has served as a sergeant in patrol, our public information officer, very, very important role, our professional standards supervisor, training supervisor, and he was the lead crisis negotiator with the SWAT team since two thousand and one. Brandon was promoted to lieutenant in June of two thousand and fourteen and served in the capacity of division commander for the patrol division until his retirement. During his time with us, he continued his education, graduating from Northern Arizona University in two thousand with a master's of education degree. Brandon currently serves as an adjunct faculty member at Northern Arizona University where he mentors and leads others as they pursue their educational goals. And he has also shown his expertise as a teacher by educating numerous individuals over the years in the police department, at the Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy, and throughout the community. He has presented on topics such as suicide awareness and prevention, especially police suicide, mental illness and developmental disabilities, juvenile justice and bullying, sex crimes, domestic violence, and interview and interrogation techniques, among many others. Brandon serves on the Governance Board of Directors for a regional mental health provider, which provides mental health assistance to more than seven thousand community members. He also serves on the Advisory Board for the Trauma Intervention Program Chapter here in Yavapai County. As a professional with a firm belief in a community-based policing philosophy and due to his involvement in the community through education, as well as his efforts as a law enforcement professional, he has been a tremendous asset to the entire Prescott Valley community, and he will be truly missed. Congratulations, Brandon.
We have a couple of things to present to Lieutenant Bonney.
Thank you, Chief. Brandon, we have a plaque here for all your years of service and dedication to the Prescott Valley Police Department and the town of Prescott Valley from nineteen ninety-six through two thousand and fifteen.
You need a small wagon when you leave tonight, so...
At this time, James Tobin, representing the police union, has a presentation to make. And now I don't owe you that ten dollars.
Thank you, Chief Gerald, and thank you, Mayor and council, for giving me just a second here. A long time ago, I was a few years out of high school, and Brandon was in high school, I think, and we both worked for the city of Prescott in the summer umpiring baseball games, Little League games. And I know this because my dad, Tom Tobin, was in charge of scheduling. And he used to pull his hair out trying to get kids like us to show up to these games when we were supposed to do it to umpire. And if we didn't show up, he had to scramble around at the last minute and get replacements or go do it himself. And I know that Brandon was one of his favorites and one of his go-to guys. Dependable, always showed up, always did a good job. Many, many years later, I came to Prescott Valley PD. I think Brandon and I both decided that we needed to get into a career that was a little safer, a little less dangerous than umpiring Little League baseball. So we became police officers. And same thing, dependable, a go-to guy, and a professional at all times. So, Brandon, it's just a small gesture on behalf of the Police Association. Got you a buck knife. And when I tell people a buck knife, they're like, "What is that thing? That's not a buck knife." They're expecting like a Bowie knife or something like that. But it is a nice little knife with an inscription, and it's from all the guys. So, and just want to say thank you for your service.
I'm personally going to miss Brandon quite a bit because I enjoyed sparring with him a little bit on verbal issues, and I also enjoyed his very thoughtful feedback and input on different things that we were going to do. He wasn't just a yes man. He didn't sit there and just go along with the flow. He actually was very thoughtful in his responses and his challenges to me, and I appreciate that, and I'm going to miss that. Thanks, Brandon.
Yeah, give me a microphone. That's proved a problem in the past. I'm very, very grateful for today. I'm very grateful to the town of Prescott Valley and the Prescott Valley Police Department for giving me the opportunities that I've had. I've wanted to do this job since I was fifteen years old. Never really wanted to do anything else, and I've had every opportunity that anybody could hope for in law enforcement. I've been able to impact lives for the positive. I've been able to actually save lives. And it has helped me grow as a person and really gave me-- I feel very selfish in that I've garnered a lot of enjoyment out of getting to serve the community like I did. And that wouldn't have been possible without the town and all the many opportunities that we've had over the years, growing as a community, as a police department, and really being one of the go-to agencies in Northern Arizona and even the state. I hope to still be able to volunteer and help with some of the expertise that the town has blessed me with over the years and continue to have a positive impact and keep giving back to such a great community. So thank you all for that opportunity.
Well, I get to see a different side of Brandon. I have the privilege of serving on a community board with Brandon. What a lot of you wouldn't have the opportunity to know is how much of his personal time he gives to not only our community, but the broader Quad City community. And Brandon, I'm so glad that in the committee meeting that you missed that we made you chair of that committee because now you have to stay with us. Brandon, you're the epitome for all the new officers coming in to pattern after. And if I say much more, I'm going to get blubbery, and that won't work. We are singularly blessed in Prescott Valley with people who want to be part of our community, especially in the police department. I honor you. I honor your family. And I'm so glad that you aren't going to disappear out of my life. Thank you for all of your service and your caring for the broader community.
Eric.
Lieutenant, thank you so much for all that you've given. It's a blessing to have people like you and your service and your dedication. I wish you the best in whatever you do from here on, and glad that you will be around here. Thank you, and God bless you and your family.
I want to congratulate you, and I think I was shocked when I first heard because you look so young, and I know you as the face of the Prescott Valley Police Department, especially before your promotion. You know, everything that happened in our community relative to public safety, you were the face that represented the community. So we're going to miss that, and it'll be big shoes to fill. And we're grateful for your service, your twenty years of expertise, professionalism, and good luck in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Marty.
Brandon, it's-- I'm glad that you're able to retire in a safe manner. Law enforcement community, I mean, it's great that you're able to put in the years that you put in and do the job that you do. It's not an easy job, and we know that. It has its difficulties. When the chief was reading your resume there, all your accomplishments and achievements and your educational background, I was saying, "This is only one person." It's amazing what you've done and what you've accomplished in the twenty years. And the fact that you were able to do the whole twenty years in one community, that's good for us. And we say this all the time. We have the best police force. All of our officers deserve the recognition that we give them and deserve recognition even when we don't give it to them. So congratulations. I hope you have as happy a retirement as I've been having. So I know we're not going to lose you to the community, so that's a good thing. So again, have a good one.
And I just wanted to say thank you for your service to our town. I know. I appreciate it. I know everybody here appreciates it. It's hard work, for sure, what you do. So we do definitely appreciate what you've done for our community and keeping us safe for twenty years. That's awesome. Thank you.
You know, it's always hard to lose a seasoned officer. But then when you think about all of the lives that you've touched and all of the officers that you've helped along the way in those twenty years, you know, we've really gained a lot from you, and that'll continue throughout the years. And thank you for all of that, for everything you've done for the town. Everything that's been said here tonight is absolutely true. We have a fine police department, and we're very proud of that department. And you can hold your head up along with the rest of them. You can look around the room and see all the officers that are here tonight for you. And, you know, we're here for you too, and we appreciate each and every one of them. And thank you very much for all you've done for us, and enjoy your retirement. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, while I have the floor, I want to say one more thing. Recently, we've been coming before this honorable body to honor officers who have been awarded some type of commendation. But I just want everybody to understand, recently, we had an incident here in town where a motorist decided to fire shots from a handgun at another motorist out of rage. And this was a true collaboration. It was the community coming forward and giving information to us. It was our patrol officers going out every day searching for this vehicle. It was a homeowner who had actual video from their own home, from their own residence, who shared that with us so that we could identify the vehicle, and a detective bureau that worked tirelessly to identify the people involved and get those people off of the street. So I just wanted to give kudos to them as well. Thank you.
Chief Freitag, thank you very much for permitting us to do that first. And welcome back.
Now, it's important that we honor those that serve the community, and that comes well before anything the Fire District has to come up and bring before you tonight. Mayor, council, staff, we greatly appreciate this opportunity. What we've done is we've taken a forty-five-minute presentation and shrunk it down to ten minutes or less. So it's going to be kind of fast and furious with the information because we do respect your time this evening. But we will be available if there's questions after this. You can certainly contact us at the Fire District. We're happy to answer them. I do have with me tonight Assistant Chief Scott Bliss and Assistant Chief Dave Tharp from the Fire District. We worked on this and analyzed this for the past year before we made the presentation to our boards. So what we're looking at, as we've come before the council and talked before, is blending the two organizations, Chino Valley Fire District and Central Yavapai Fire District. As you know, we've been operating under a joint management agreement for the last year that's been very successful and has yielded some real dollar savings for the community, which is important. As senior staff, we thought, you know, we could do better. We think we can put this thing together in a different manner and save the taxpayers more money. But the first question we get is, "Well, why are we looking at this all of a sudden?" And as we all know, and we won't beat a dead horse, we had the recession. So there's a forty-five percent average loss of net assessed valuation. We have Prop 117 that limited our revenues going forward. We're impacted by the PSPRS costs that continue to skyrocket out of control. So we're very limited on what we can do with those revenues. The five percent cap under Prop 117 is an artificial cap. The real cap's down around three and a half percent based on net assessed valuation and how that's figured. So we really have to step back and take a look and say, "Does the current business model for the fire service still work?" And our answer is no, it doesn't. So we came up with a hypothesis, and what it says is, "Can these two physically contiguous fire districts operate more effectively and efficiently by creating one organization and leveraging the predicted cost containment and cost avoidance opportunities?" Though, that's the hypothesis that we approached this venture from. We looked at a multitude of issues, from doing nothing to going back to Chino and Central being completely separate. We looked at another one that I don't like to use the word, so we'll just go straight to the one we landed on, which is Joint Powers Authority, which is granted to us under ARS Statute forty-eight dash eight oh five point zero one. A fire authority is a type of joint powers authority. So when we talk about any situation where we're going to try to blend the two organizations together, we've got three questions we have to answer first. The first one is, "Does it work operationally?" Because if it doesn't work operationally, if we can't provide the service to the community, it's not an option. If it does, we move to the next question, and that's, "Does it work financially?" If it doesn't, there's no sense in moving forward. In our analysis of a fire authority, it does work. Does it work politically? That's the last question. That's the one we're working on, but we think we have the answer. We're standing here before you tonight because our answer to those questions, in our opinion, is yes. It does work operationally. That's very simple. The shared resources is a benefit to both communities and can help cut down on our overtime. That lends itself directly to financially. Under one other option we looked at, you would have to merge, blend the two mill rates, get them exactly the same at the same time. There was no way to do that because of the disparity in the rates. Under a fire authority, we can keep the tax rates separate. So Central Yavapai Fire District sets their tax rate. Chino Valley sets their tax rate. That's how that works. We're also able to keep both fire department assistance tax subsidies that come from the state. It's not a big amount of money, but it is, it does make a difference when someone pulls several hundred thousand dollars out of your revenue. When we look at politically, the feedback overall has been very positive. Those that we've talked to in the community, the feedback from newspaper reports, the feedback from our joint board meeting that was open to the public and widely advertised, the feedback from that has been very positive as well. So what is a fire authority? A fire authority is different than the M-word, which I hesitate to use, but merger. We're not doing a merger. We're looking at a fire authority. A fire authority, the two individual entities, Central Yavapai, Chino Valley Fire District, continue to exist, but they don't employ anyone. They enter into a contractual agreement or an intergovernmental agency agreement to form a third entity under one umbrella. Why is that important? Economy's a scale. We can buy things cheaper as one than we can if we're two separate entities. So those two exist. Central Valley, or Central Yavapai Fire District, Chino Valley Fire District, they maintain taxing authority. They maintain bonding authority. They maintain election authority. This other entity created through a contractual agreement between the two has no taxing authority, no bonding authority. They don't elect anyone. The people of the Central Yavapai Fire District still elect their board members, and that board decides among them which of them will represent on the fire authority board. That's how the governance piece of it works. So it keeps those areas separate, but again, all the employees are the employees of the fire authority. We talked about that. When we look at the fiscal analysis, and this is more pertinent to Central Yavapai residents in some ways than it is Chino Valley residents. Because when Chief Bliss ran the financials, what he found on the line graph that you can see above, the top line is the three dollar and twenty-five cent mill rate cap. That's where Chino is right now, the three twenty-five cap, and that's where Chino will remain for now. If you come down to the bottom and you look at the four lines that represent Central Yavapai Fire District, these are the ones that are important to you. The red line, the bottom line, is what the tax rate looks like under a fire authority. The top green lines, that M-word, we don't want to talk about, and then there's the gray line, which is CYFD alone. You can see that under a fire authority, the tax rate is lower for Central Yavapai residents than it is under any of the other options. It costs less to operate the fire authority than it does to operate Central Yavapai Fire District on its own, and it costs less to operate than it does under the joint management agreement. There's fiscal savings. Now, these are estimates based on projections that we have from PSPRS as well as other vendors that have given us a cost breakdown as one blended organization. These numbers can fluctuate some, but the relationship between the lines don't change. They remain unchanged. So the projected tax rate for Central Yavapai residents is three to five cents less under a fire authority than it is under any other option. And I think that's important because if we operate under the fire authority, Central Yavapai Fire District has to levy less money. So when people ask the question, "Is Central Yavapai subsidizing Chino Valley Fire District?", the answer is no. There's no way that if Central Yavapai was subsidizing Chino, that Central Yavapai would have to collect less revenue than they do right now on their own. So what happens if we continue and we don't do anything? We don't look at the fire authority? Well, Central lacks some capacity to grow. Chino continues, but there's slim margins, and costs remain high for the residents of both organizations. Entering into the fire authority immediately provides stability and sustainability for both groups. So when we talk about cost savings, what are the dollars? That's what you want to see. Besides the three to five cents less on the projections for tax rate, what are the real dollar amounts? We estimate under the joint management agreement that we saved two hundred thousand dollars in the last operational year. We know that that number is sixty-five thousand dollars higher because there was money budgeted for a project at Central Yavapai that we didn't spend because we had access to a facility in Chino. We didn't add that to these savings because that's not an ongoing cost. That was a one-time thing, so we just left it off. Any numbers we present are conservative. We want to undersell, not oversell this. Under the fire authority, again, conservative estimates, there's an additional one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars approximately, additional dollars that can be saved, conservative estimate. That does not include a potential thirty thousand dollars savings in premium cost for workers' compensation, which would push us over the two hundred thousand dollar mark. So you're looking under a fire authority at saving, again, conservative estimate, around four hundred thousand dollars annually. And we think that that number would be higher. We're not saying it's a hundred thousand dollars higher, but there's additional savings to be had in there. Now, we separate out cost avoidance. If Central Yavapai's call volume continues to increase and they were to add an eighth station to cover the taxpayers of the area, they would also have to add-- station to cover the taxpayers of the area, they would also have to add three battalion chief positions because they're at their max span of control, which is seven. You go to eight, you've got to add the three additional. Under this arrangement with the fire authority, because Chino has three stations and three battalion chiefs, we've increased our battalion chief pool to six, we've increased our stations to 10. Under span of control, we can grow to 14 before we'd have to add anybody else to the payroll in that battalion chief position, which means we've avoided over $350,000 in costs in those positions alone. Not to mention, Chino needs an operations chief. They can't afford it right now. We have access under this arrangement with Central Yavapai Fire District, so there's over $100,000 in savings in that position. We don't add that to the ongoing savings because those are costs that we're not incurring today. They would be future costs. We're avoiding those. But we want to keep them separate. We don't want to come out to the public and say, hey, we're going to save you $900,000 when the real ongoing costs are the $400,000, the others are cost avoidance. So I skipped the slides that, for time's sake, that went through the benefits of the two organizations, because I think we really covered them. We're talking about stability, we're talking about sustainability, we're talking about a decrease in the projected tax rate for Central Yavapai's residents. Now, Tuesday night at the town council meeting for Chino Valley, when everything was done, we walked out into the audience, and afterwards, one of the audience members says, hey, this sounds great, but one question that wasn't asked is, what's the downside? It sounds really good, but what's the downside to this? What are you hiding? We're not hiding anything. The downside to a fire authority relates directly to administration, myself and staff. On a fire authority, because you still have the two other agencies that exist, even though all the employees are employees of the fire authority, we have to do three sets of financials every month. We have to do three audits annually. We have to work with basically three governing boards. Even though they're the same people, it's three separate boards. So it creates more work for our administration, but the bottom line is, it creates a more sustainable future for both groups. We can cut down on overtime costs. We haven't even figured that one in. Today, if Chino has an extra person and Central's at minimum staffing, if somebody calls in sick at Central, we have to call in overtime to fill the position. We can't pull that extra person from Chino, that would save money. Under this system, we simply pull that person, move them over here, now we don't have to incur the overtime costs, because we have to keep a minimum of three people on these fire trucks to operate them. So we are looking at this, we are looking at other opportunities for the future, at the way that fire districts operate and the way that we operate in these communities. We're breaking away from the standard mold that every time call volume increases, we have to throw another fire truck, another fire station, another nine to 12 people at it. We think there's better ways to approach that. And so we're exploring those as well. We really look at this from a business perspective. Does this make sense? Is it cost-effective? Is it efficient? Is this what the taxpayers need? In this situation, we really think this is the way to go. Operationally, for the taxpayers, no downside. Financially, for the taxpayers, we're not seeing a downside in the financial analysis. Workload for us, the only downside, and we'll deal with that. So with that, I will end. We've proven our hypothesis, we believe. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer anything that you have.
Questions?
No, not a question. I just think you've done a fabulous job here. It looks great, and I appreciate the effort that all of you are doing to help us in the sense of all the citizens when it comes to the taxes. I realize you're driven, and your drive is to do the best for the community in every which way possible, and no one can ask more than that. So I appreciate that, Chief. Thank you. Thank you to all of you.
I don't have a question, but I really want to thank you for not staying with status quo. That would have been so much less painful for you, and a lot less community meetings and a lot less of putting your head out on the chopping block. It takes courage to do what you've done, and it takes foresight. And again, we are so fortunate in our community to have people in your positions with innovative foresight, willing to go against status quo. I compliment you, I support you, I encourage you.
Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, what's the next step and what's the timeframe in terms of finalizing the process?
At the joint board meeting, the boards asked us when we could have a draft, IGA to them. We hope to have that by Tuesday's board meeting for the boards to review, so that they can start vetting that and give us some feedback. So it's September, we could have a final draft, or at least meet in September and complete a final draft, so that we could hopefully have a decision later than October. When you're changing the name of an organization or starting up under a contract like this, there's a tremendous amount of work that goes into it once they sign the document, and we're going to need months to get that together. So once the IGA is signed, we are looking for a July 1, 2016 official start date, but we're also looking to implement a short-term IGA to bridge the gap so that we can start utilizing personnel wherever we need them immediately.
You know, I can remember when we were spending an awful lot of our time as a council trying to answer questions on what the town was going to do about the fire department and how we were going to fix the fire department, which of course, we have no control over. And I'm really proud to say that your board, the Central Yavapai Board, because I know most of the people there, have done an outstanding job and a lot of hard work, and I see there's a couple of board members here, and they've done an outstanding job at working very hard to bring it to this point. And I know you've done a lot of work. You and your assistants have done a great job in getting it to this point, and I'm very happy to see this. I'm not speaking as vice mayor, I'm speaking as a taxpayer in Yavapai County, and we're glad to have you here and glad to see the hard work you're doing. Thank you very much, all of you.
One more.
Thank you. All right. I think it's really nice that you have kept us in the loop and kept us updated on all the different changes and proposals, and I think the conclusion here. But for those people sitting out in the audience and at home, watching however they're watching us, they're not going to, once everything is implemented, they're not going to see any change in response times or staffing. I mean, as far as they know, they dial 911, dispatch is going to send the fire truck, they're not going to see any difference in any service that they've had in the past, correct?
That's correct. No, it doesn't impact service. When we make a decision, being an agency, that our sole purpose is emergency response, public safety, that's all we do. Any financial decision we make directly impacts public service. So if we can set up a model that lowers our operating costs and provides more sustainability that only serves to benefit the taxpayers as we move forward, ensuring that we do have what we need to provide as call volume continues to increase.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody is assured that their homes are not in danger in case of, God forbid, a fire happens.
No, all the trucks that are here in Prescott Valley, no trucks are moving, no stations are moving, everything's staying as it is. We're just operating them for less money.
Larry?
Yes, the chief, a statement and then a question. The statement is, thank you for marrying fire science with good, sound financial management. That's quite frankly, hard to come by in the fire sciences. I'll just be real honest about it. So thank you very much for doing that. And then the question is, have you been able to get anything creative out of your board member, Rutherford?
Yes, we did come up with Steve on a stick, and that was from him, and we greatly appreciate it. So when he can't be around, we always have him around. We greatly appreciate your time tonight. I'm sorry for taking so much of it, but thank you for allowing us this opportunity. We very much enjoy working with the town of Prescott Valley, getting to know each of you, attending the meetings so that we're up to date on what's happening in the community. And I must say, I said this at a national night out the other night, coming from the St. Louis area, I truly believe that you have one of the best police agencies going, and we really appreciate the partnership that we have with them. So I commend your officers and Chief Gerald and Chief Edelstein and the entire organization. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Okay, next we have, could we have Carol, please come up? Is it Kalosey? Did I get close? Kalosey, wonderful. Well, Carol, we have a plaque for you here for the Library Board of Trustees. I want to thank you. I'll start off with the plaque here. It says, appreciation award from the town of Prescott Valley, presented to Carol Kalosey in appreciation for dedicated service on the Library Board of Trustees, August 2009 through June 2015. Congratulations. Stuart will have some words.
Yeah, I really wanted, I said she could leave, and I said especially after what I was going to say, she'll want to leave. We were at the pool party the other night, and I think the idea of trustees worked because she was saying, I think people come to her with questions. And of course, I think there was some question about what has happened lately with the library, and she didn't know because she's not on the trustee, and I said, if you would stay on the trustees, you wouldn't have to ask me this question. The other thing is, though, Carol wears another hat, very dedicated for the friends. Right now, she's serving as president because there isn't anybody. She's indicated, and we hope that she will continue if we need her, and she works very diligently for their sales, and she still works in the store. So she's very dedicated to this library, and I really miss her on the board, so.
Thank you, Stuart. Thank you, and I miss being on the board, believe it or not. Six years is a long time, but we had a good group, and I think we got a lot done. And our next step now is the friends, and we will continue doing that. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. We appreciate you. You and our devoted volunteers at the library are the heart of our library, the absolute beating heart. And I'm just going to shut up and give you a hug.
Okay, if we can have Casey Danner, please step forward. Looks like it's just beginning. Okay, who'd like to speak first?
The same night that our computers aren't working.
Larry? Diane has words.
This is Casey Danner's 15th year of service, oh boy. Congratulations to Casey for his 15 years of service with the town. He has been our IT manager since starting to work here in the year 2000. He's had the opportunity and the occasional challenge of working with every department in some form or another, whether it's computers, software programs, the phone system, you name it. With the significant growth in both technology and employees in the last 15 years, Casey has been constantly challenged. In 2000, we had about 100 computers, now we have an inventory of over 400, and for this same time, the phone system has more than doubled in size. During his 15 years with us, Casey's accomplishments have been many. He's been instrumental in converting to a new accounting and payroll system, assisted in modifying utility bills, payroll direct deposit forms, and payroll checks with the town's new software, redesigned the town's website, upgraded to the new phone system in the civic center in the police building, completed the mobile data computers project for police department vehicles, maintained and upgraded the different servers and hardware systems, assisted in the library building project, a huge challenge and accomplishment for Casey, upgraded the video surveillance system, and upgraded Laserfish in the town's retention program. All these projects and so many others not mentioned involved a tremendous amount of hours of research, planning, budgeting, and purchasing, and at times Casey spent late nights and weekdays updating or upgrading, just so we could turn on our computers or make calls without problems on Monday mornings. As mentioned in his 10-year award, but it's worth repeating, is that underneath that reserved and sometimes quiet person, Casey has another side that comes out at town events. He won the town pie eating contest at the picnic many years ago, has taken the lead on the dance floor at our winter galas with such dancing hits as Who Let the Dogs Out and The Chicken Dance, and he's shown us another personal talent with his karaoke singing. Casey can always get a group of us together to participate, whether for a walk for charity or walking to improve our fitness. He has been heavily involved in the wellness committee and creative in helping to come up with challenging and fun ways to get us all to improve our health and well-being. All this being said, and hopefully not embarrassing him too much, we are honored to have Casey working here and wish him continued success. He is well-respected and a huge asset to the town, and we appreciate the hard work and dedication he has shown over these past 15 years. Congratulations and thank you, Casey.
After hearing all that you've accomplished, I don't think I'll complain about the computers not working tonight. Perfect timing. We have here for you an appreciation award from the town of Prescott Valley, presented to Casey Danner in appreciation for 15 years of dedicated service, July 2000 through July 2015. Congratulations. Thank you. And we have a pen. And, ooh, $125. Congratulations. And...
I won't put you through that. Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council, for the opportunity. Thank you to whoever had those kind words, Bill, I'm assuming. It's been said that if you like your job, that you'll never work a day in your life, and I can honestly say that I haven't been working for the last 15 years. I love working here. I really appreciate my manager, Bill. He is a good friend and a mentor to me, allows me to do my job, and he's been great. I love the staff that I work with. I've made many, many friends over the years here, many of which I still have and many of which are still here. Thank you, Larry, for your leadership. I've enjoyed working with you these years, Ivan, Diane. Thank you, council. I love when a, I don't like when a new group comes in, but I like to meet new council members, and I've enjoyed working with each one of you and each one that's gone before you, so I appreciate that. And I hope to have many more years here before I retire, so thank you very much.
Casey, in all that dialogue, nothing was said about you have to deal with my generation and technology. He's really brought me along. I'm not in your office very often anymore, so you get to take credit for that. Number one, you were gentle, you were kind, you were instructive and informative, and you never made me feel like a foolish lady of an older generation, and I compliment you for that. I wanted to do you proud, so I worked at everything you taught me. I worked at everything you taught me.
Yeah, I just, I'm shocked again, you know, with Lieutenant Bonnie, he's so young. You look so young. I know you love what you do. I think everything that I can see, that I'm experiencing through the town, goes very smoothly in a technology-driven, I think, environment. I don't see any gray hair yet and... But we appreciate all your help and we look forward to your continued evolution as we get more involved with technology, so congratulations.
Well, as Mike keeps referring to how young everyone looks, I think you look so young just because we're getting kinda old. But that's okay, I'm good with that. But I appreciate all your service and you are always there. I've been doing much better, I would say. I haven't been at your office as much. But I appreciate what you do and the patience with all of us as we work through these computer systems. And it's hard enough doing with this ITT stuff, but when you have to keep reminding someone what their password is, that's even worse, right? Thank you.
Well, the rest of the council might be old, but I'm still pretty young. But I can still appreciate the 15 years, so thank you for your 15 years of service and hopefully you got 15 more in ya.
Yeah. It's great that somebody could have a career of 15 years and be, you know, given the award and the certificates. And we hope that you stay on for many more years as you say you do. And it's even better to hear that you enjoy every day that you work. Knowing the computer and the technological changes that have happened over the last 15 years are incredible. I mean, we basically started from almost nothing to what we have today and it's constantly changing. I mean, Windows 10 is coming out, so we're still holding off on whether to switch over to that or not and get all the bugs out. But it's also nice that you're able to help those of us who think we know more about computers than we actually do, you know. So thank you for your help and your assistance and continued success in a job that you love. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have comments or communications?
Yeah, I actually have something. For those that keep asking me, Chipotle Grill is open. Yeah, so go out there, have a good meal, give it a few weeks because the parking lot is jammed every day, all day.
Sure, go ahead. Mary?
Well, it won't be long before the healing field will be coming up. We will be putting the field of flags up on September 4th. And Darlene Packard has been the chair of that field this year and she has done an amazing job. We have what we call this year Patriot Week. So be sure to check it out and come by because it's gonna be an amazing, amazing week of nothing but honoring and loving America and everything she stands for.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Okay, the next item is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. A, approving the July 16 work study and July 23, 2015 council meeting minutes, approving an amended Final Development Plan FDP 15-009 for Viewpoint Unit 15. C, approving revisionary plat RP 15-003, realigning the intersection at Long Look Drive, creating new right-of-way for Viewpoint Drive, and also creating tract A and tract B, removing the lot lines, delineating Lot 8972 and Lot 8974 through Lot 8978. D, approving revisionary plat RP 15-004, combining lots 100 and 101, Prescott Country Club Unit 6 and the new Lot 100A located at 1427 North Wrestlers Roost, Dewey, Arizona, at the request by Charles and Judith McKee. E, approving the purchase of Dell laptops in the amount of $24,997.68 for the library computer lab. And F, approving accounts payable. Does anyone want to pull an item?
Vice Mayor, I'd like to pull Item E from the Consent Agenda if I can.
Okay. All right. Can I have a motion for the remaining items?
I'll make a motion to approve all items listed under the Consent Agenda except for E by voice vote.
I'll second.
We have a second, we have a motion and a second. Diane, can you take the voice vote, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that motion passes.
That would be unanimous.
Sorry.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor, that would be a unanimous vote for you on that item?
Okay, then we have Item E to discuss, approving the purchase of Dell laptops in the amount of $24,997.68 for the library computer lab.
And I just, I just wanted to know if we had to buy it through these specific people because I just Googled the exact laptop model and it looks like we could save $50 a laptop and we could end up buying 26 laptops instead of 25, so.
All right, Casey, who's already gone. Got the quote for this and part of the reason is because it's on the state contract. So the state has already gone through the process to competitively bid those laptops, so it makes us so we don't have to go out and actually bid them out. That's the reason why it was done that way.
Okay. So it wouldn't really make sense to do it the other way, like just to buy them separately?
We could do that. We couldn't buy them individually because collectively they cost more than $16,000, which is our bidding threshold. So that's why we took the option of going on a state contract because they've already gone through the work to do that competitive bidding process.
Makes sense. So can I make a motion? Yes, that answers it.
Okay. Okay. And I'll need a motion for Item E.
I will make a motion to approve Item E by like, or by a voice vote.
And the second?
I'll second.
Okay. Diane, call the vote.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Motion passes. Moving on to new business. Item 9A, consideration of approving Resolution Number 1925, declaring the document amendments Chapter 2, mayor and council to be public record under ARS 9802. Yes, sir.
You know, I wonder sometimes why the legal department does so much house cleaning. Is it because, you know, is that our gift? I, you know, maybe that's what we're good at is cleaning house. But we needed to respond to some changes that had occurred in state statute and then we took the opportunity to make some other adjustments that we needed to make in relation to our statutes or our town code provisions dealing with elections. Worked with the clerk's office and believe that these are not only required by the changes in state statute, but also helpful in terms of administering our elections going forward.
Any questions, anyone? Accept a motion?
Okay.
I'd be glad to make a motion. Motion to authorize the mayor, or in his absence of vice mayor, to sign Resolution Number 1925, declaring document amendments Chapter 2, mayor and council be a public record under ARS 9-802 by electronic, I'm sorry, by a voice vote.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Could we call the vote, please?
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Again, you have a unanimous vote, Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Item B, consideration of approving the reading of ordinance 807 by title only on two separate occasions and then place the same on final passage, adopting amendments to Town Code, Chapter 2, mayor and council.
Of course, this is all caused by Diane. You know, she gets irritated when we have long ordinances that she then has to pay to publish. And so what we end up doing is breaking them in pieces, as you just did, by adopting that resolution. And then the ordinance that you're considering now is adopting that by reference.
You know, I don't think throwing Diane under the bus is a good thing for your very long script, but anyway.
I don't see how anybody could have any questions, but I won't judge if you do. Okay, I would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to read ordinance number 807 by title only on two separate occasions or place the same on final passage by voice vote.
I'll second the motion.
Can we have a second?
Yeah.
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Thank you, I think. Again, we have unanimous vote, thank you.
Very much. Now, would you please read the ordinance for the first reading?
Ordinance Number 807, an ordinance of the mayor and common council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, adopting by reference a document entitled amendments to Chapter 2, mayor and council, declared by Resolution Number 1925 to be a public record, which amends Sections 2-01-040 vacancies in council and 2-01-070 bond in Article 2-01 council, Sections 2-03-010 primary election, 2-203-030 general election nomination, 2-03-040 election to office, 2-03-050 candidate financial disclosure, and 2-03-060 nomination materials in Article 2-3 council election, and Sections 2-06-030 time of filing petitions, and 2-06-040 statement and circulators affidavit in Article 2-06 special elections in Chapter 2, mayor and council of the town code, to conform to recent Arizona statutory revisions and otherwise update the code, providing that all other articles, sections, and subsections of the town code not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you very much. I can't wait for the second reading.
Me too.
And I'm looking forward to the legislature meeting once again to change our...
Oh, me too.
Thank you. Item C, consideration of approving Resolution Number 1926, adopting and approving a final development plan FDP 15-003 for Pronghorn Ranch Unit 16.
Yes, Mr., yes, Mr. Vice Mayor. Snake. Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, you're considering two final development plans in this action and the subsequent action for Unit 16 and 17. The total comprises 80 single-family residential lots on approximately 35 acres. The submittals are consistent with the approved master development plan as well as the preliminary development plan approved by the Town's Planning and Zoning Commission. We're very pleased to see Pronghorn Ranch bringing in new developable lots. They are running out of them and we hope that we continue to build homes in Prescott Valley as briskly as we are. I would respond to any questions about this item or the subsequent item on your agenda. Mr. Vice Mayor, it's your direction.
Any questions?
No.
Hearing none, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to authorize the mayor in his absence of vice mayor to sign Resolution 1926, adopting and approving a final development plan FDP 15-003 for Pronghorn Ranch Unit 16.
Okay, and a second?
I would be glad to do that, but we have two.
Hey, Diane, if you would call the...
We're not touching anything.
I think it's Richard. If I had to guess.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
You have a unanimous vote, Vice Mayor.
Thank, thank you.
You're welcome.
Maybe we can just do hand signals.
Item D, consideration of approving Resolution Number 1927, adopting and approving a final development plan FDP 15-004 for Pronghorn Ranch Unit 17. Anything further, Richard?
No, sir, I'd respond to your questions.
Okay, any questions? I would accept a motion.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to authorize the mayor in his absence of vice mayor to sign Resolution 1927, adopting and approving a final development plan FDP 15-004 for Pronghorn Ranch Unit 17.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
I have a second, thank you. Diane, would you call the vote, please, or ask for hands or however you want to do this?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Thank you. Have a unanimous vote again.
Thank you very much. Item E, consideration of approving Resolution Number 1928, approving a final development plan FDP 15-012 for Canyon Bible Church.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, just to make an observation, we recognize Casey Danner, our IT manager, and everything quits working tonight. So the cracker's not working, the microphone's like a snake, and you're having problems as well. Thank you, Casey.
Full job security.
Yeah, thank you, Casey. Okay, so you're considering a final development plan for a two-phase... In any case, you're considering a final development plan for a two-phased proposed development on a lot in East Ridge, the property Zone C3. The proposal is for Phase 1 to be an overflow parking facility related to the Canyon Baptist Church, which resides along the highway, doesn't front the highway, but is visible from the highway. Second phase would be approximately 3,800-square-foot office facility. They're preparing the pad as part of their initial work in Phase 1 to accommodate that office building facility. That office building facility would be utilized for the Canyon View Baptist Church. Construction's underway. They're anxious to pave the thing. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. Hearing none?
I'll be glad to make a motion.
Thank you.
Motion to authorize a mayor or in his absence a vice mayor to sign Resolution Number 1928, approving FDP 15-012, and sign the Proposition 207 waiver.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Diane, would you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
You have a unanimous vote, Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. Item F. Consideration of approving the purchase of a SL RAT, and I'm looking forward to hearing about this.
Yeah.
And associated accessories based on the cost proposal in the amount of $28,825.
Neil? Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor and Council. Well, as you can see, I'm up here because I want to buy some more equipment. And what we're looking at this time is it's called an SL RAT, which is a sewer line rapid assessment tool. And the idea behind it is that right now, when we go out to inspect a sewer line, we have to put a camera down there, and we run it from manhole to manhole, and it takes some time to set up. And generally, doing one run of pipe 400 feet might take us 30 minutes to 45 minutes to camera that section and do an inspection. This is actually using sound waves, and so we would put a transmitter in one manhole, we'd go down to the other manhole, put the receiver down there, turn it on. In three minutes, it tells us the condition of the pipe inside. And so it's somewhere between 10 and 15 times quicker than doing a video inspection, although it doesn't give you the type of detail that a camera would give you. And so this would be something that we could use to do a lot more assessments of our sewer lines quicker. When we find one that seems to be a problem, then we can focus on that one either with cleaning with the vac truck that we purchased or with doing a follow-up camera inspection on that section of line so that we know what we're dealing with. This is relatively new technology. Actually, the EPA has tested it as well and found that it works very well. We had it up for a demonstration, and it worked just the way they said it did. We took it out to some areas where we thought we might have some issues, and it basically assessed the line correctly. And so it's a little over $28,000, but we believe that it's going to provide us with a lot of efficiencies in getting some work done. So I guess with that, I would answer any questions you might have.
I don't have any questions.
Questions?
No.
Yes.
Obviously, this is going to be much more efficient and a time-saving. Have you done any calculations along that? And I have to say, I just love that it came out being called a RAT.
Yeah, it's funny, and because their software, they're calling SL Dog because it's a diagnostic tool. I'm just wondering what the cat part of it is.
Yeah, I enjoyed it.
We haven't seen that yet, but maybe that's one of the accessories. Now, we, the only calculations we've done are just looking at the time savings. So, you know, like I say, rather than going out and spending 45 minutes doing one section, we'll have it done in three minutes. So it's, you know, 10 to 15 times as quick, and we'll be able to go through, like I say, and just start doing this in a bunch of areas. And then when we find a problem, we focus on that, and then the guys keep moving on. It's going to save a lot of time.
Incredible, efficient, new technology.
How often, when you're going, now, are you going out after there's been a complaint or an issue, or are you just randomly testing at this point?
Right now, we typically go out and camera when we know there's been an issue. So if there's been a blockage, and we clear the blockage, we try to follow up with the camera to make sure that there's nothing else lingering in there or, you know, sometimes it can be root intrusion, and the root can get in there and it can start to break up the pipe. And so you want to make sure that not only has the root been taken care of, but if the pipe is damaged, then we're going to have to, you know, come back later on and try to do a repair on that, which means digging down. But yeah, so typically, right now, and I think there was some information in here that says 40% of the time, we're utilizing it to determine infrastructure conditions, and 60% of the time is when there's been an obstruction or a blockage in the line.
But you're still only able to do it manhole to manhole. So this will cut down the unnecessary time.
Right. We won't have to send in a camera unless we come up with a line that is showing positive with the SL RAT, then we can go in and do a better inspection.
Makes good sense. Thank you.
So I'm guessing as we continue to grow as a community, also, this will help you very much with all that you have to take care of out there. And then if you find a problem, or as you use this machine, then you find a problem, then you might go ahead, get the cameras out, then go further. But definitely, you can get more ground coverage with this.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, sounds good.
Any other questions? Okay, I would accept a motion.
I'd be glad to make a motion. Motion to approve the purchase of the SL RAT and associated accessories based on the cost proposal in the amount of $28,825, as outlined in the fiscal analysis, by voice vote.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Diane, will you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
You have a unanimous vote, Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Neil. Okay. Comments from the public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask the town manager to review the matter or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Does anyone wish to address the council? Please, step forward. Come on down. Be sure to tell us your name.
Sargon Bernard Folio. Yeah, I think that on the agenda today was something about a water price increase. I saw that somewhere, but if it is, I'm here against that. But if it isn't for any future one, it would be. And I was here a while back about your removal of bees from the, I had a bunch of bees in my water meter thing. And I took them out myself because they said they were just going to come out and kill them. And there's documented that when all the bees are gone, we'll be gone within four years. And there's a mass bee, you know, thing going on right now with China having to hand pollinate their bees because they killed so many of them. And about the water, I've been living in Castle Canyon, Mesa, for 31 years, and I've never used any bug sprays or anything to do with killing, you know, insects or anything. And all that stuff washes into the water table. I know that a lot of people use Roundup and all that stuff, and I'd like to see that banned for use in the whole area. And I don't know, something came to me with hearing this meeting about, someone said, if everybody agrees to everything, then somebody doesn't need to be in the council. I mean, that was some official thing I read that just came to mind. But basically, since the water thing's not on the issue, I guess that's all I want to say is if you need to kill bees, try to save them first and not just kill them because it's easier. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Last item is adjournment. I'd accept a motion.
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Voice vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Maybe.
Pardon?
She is listening, yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. That is a unanimous vote.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.